Thanks again.
Okay, let's call the meeting order. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director Mann?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Cilio? Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, and tonight the invocation will be with Pastor Paul Chapel from Lancaster Baptist Church.
Before I pray, I'd like to just take a moment and thank our council for your leadership in our community, Mayor, for your leadership in fighting crime. Next Monday, we will welcome a record enrollment of 1,000 students to West Coast Baptist College from 48 states and 24 countries. And everything you do to enhance the quality of this community helps us in our mission. And so, we thank you for that. And on behalf of the 8,000 members of Lancaster Baptist Church, I thank you tonight for your recent decision to allow pastors like myself to pray in the name of Jesus Christ in this day of tolerance. It seems like everything's tolerated, but the things that made this country great. And so, we thank you for your stand. And now, let us pray and ask God's blessing on this meeting. Our Father in Heaven, we come before you tonight to thank you for your many blessings upon our great nation. We recognize, as our leaders have recognized for over 200 years, that without you, we have no great land. We need your help. And this council and this mayor gladly state that they need your wisdom. And we pray that you would bless them as they lead our city. We pray that you would bless our city staff, that you would give our city manager and all of the employees here wisdom and leadership and a spirit to work together. And Lord, we pray that their decisions would make Lancaster a safer city, a more prosperous city, and a place of real joy and community. And so, we ask your richest blessings upon them. And we pray that this meeting tonight would accomplish the goals that you have for this city. And we ask all of these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Mayor? Yeah, Mayor Paris, we're fortunate to have Scout Master Jay Elkin here with Boy Scout Troop 76. And I'd like to invite him up and have them lead the pledge.
Okay, who's in charge? Come on, is everyone in charge? Come on up here. Yeah, come on up here. My kids used to have to wear that. You hate it, don't you? Here's the mic. Why don't you start us off, okay?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. We appreciate it. We also have a presentation and we have a CIF football championship student video. And the city manager will tell us more.
Last year, both Perakely High School and Cortel High School were very honored when the mayor and council gave them proclamations in honor of their football championships. And football season is starting next week, which I'm very excited about, as we all are. And the students of Lancaster High School produced a video on the two championship teams from the city of Lancaster. And we're going to show you that, and then it'll be on our website and at the school, et cetera. Coach, I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody again. I left 80 hot, tired kids out on the field, but I didn't want to miss this. So, thank you very much for inviting me.
Thank you for winning.
Hi, this is Shannon Doe with the City of Lancaster's Communications Division. We've got a special treat for you today. Some talented young filmmakers from Antelope Valley High School have produced a video about last year's CIF football champions, Cortel High School and Perakely High School. Let's take a look. For the 2008-2009 football season, Antelope Valley's very own Cortel High School and Perakely High School brought home the CIF championship, proving once again that the Antelope Valley is the place to be.
I'm right here with Coach Nagin. Would you like to introduce?
CIF championship players? You bet I would. This is Don Brown. He was a running back and a defensive back. This is James Page. He was a defensive lineman and also a running back. Damian Taylor was a tight end and a defensive lineman. And Isaiah Culver was a defensive back and a wide receiver. And yeah, he, and a kick returner. He was pretty instrumental in a lot of the things that we accomplished, so.
We're here in Perakely High School, and we're going to interview the CIF champions. How hard did you guys train?
We've been training for months, every day after school, even before school, for hours of practice, but it's all worth it.
And what tactics you guys used to win the game?
Mainly speed for like all of our games, because we were a lot quicker than a lot of teams.
Yeah, we used, we had experience, really. We, we would be in the game and get the feel of the game. Whatever we felt, we can beat them with. And obviously, the coaches saw that, and we used that against them. Like he said, our speed, sometimes our strength, and sometimes through the air, throwing the ball. We had a good quarterback, you know, he could get it wherever on the field, so.
And I feel, I feel like most of them were off, off, off the field, because we was a real close team. We did a lot of stuff together. And off the field, it helped us like cope and be together and play as a team on the field.
What tactics did you guys use to win the game?
Scheme. It's all about scheme. We always tell the guys, do your job. That's all we want you to do. We never ask you to do any more, any less. As long as you do your job, it's going to pan out in the end. They were bigger and stronger than we were, but we showed with scheme and technique that even the little guy has a chance.
In the beginning of the season, do you guys think you guys were going to win the CIF championship?
At the beginning of the season, I wasn't sure. Just going into the season, just trying to win each game that we came across. Was going game by game, not necessarily looking at the big picture. It was just a game by game.
Our junior year, after we lost to St. Paul, and we know we could have beat them, and they won the CIF championship, we knew we were capable. But in the beginning of the season, this season, we were just taking it one game at a time, and we were just trying to accomplish each goal one game at a time, not looking up to the CIF championships yet.
What difficulties and injuries did you guys have to go through this season?
Well, the first game of the playoffs, I broke my wrist, and I thought I was going to be out for the season. And then, I came back for the finals with a cast on, and I played, because that's how bad I want to play, so.
Do you think it was worth it?
Yeah, I was, I would never take that back, so, yeah.
Out of all the schools, which one was the toughest competitor?
We have to say Northview. They're much bigger than us, stronger than us, faster than us. And they just, we just came in there, and we just played our hearts out, and we got the victory.
When we lost to St. Paul, and St. Paul ended up winning the championship, I kind of said to myself, you know, these guys are all coming back, and now they've, they've kind of had a taste of the battle. And if, if they do the right things in the offseason, and you've got to understand, there's still a little bit of luck that goes into winning a championship like this. You've got to have the right players, the right people, the right coaches. And I, I thought, like, like the guy said, that we had a, we had a chance to compete. And, but you, you know, you can't ever get too full of yourself, because as soon as you start feeling like you're the best, then somebody else comes along and says, hey, wait a minute. And I think the Palmdale game really brought us back down to earth early in the season. And we lost to Palmdale, and then from there, we won 10 football games in a row. And I don't care what level you're playing at to win 10 games in a row, is, is pretty good. So, by the time we got, we got to the championship game, I said, we got a chance.
How does it feel to have won the championship game?
It feels great because of all the hard work we put in, and it feels great to be, it's all paid off.
It feels great to know that all the hard work paid off, and that, you know, we started the season real rough, losing our first three, but came out and won 11 straight, and it feels really good to know that we're number one.
How does it feel to be the CIF champions?
At that moment in time, I felt like I was on cloud nine, and we wasn't going to come down. And still, right now, I'm going to be honest, I still feel like I'm on cloud nine, so it hasn't went away.
How do you guys feel?
Yeah, it was unbelievable at first, and I, it took a while to hit me. But now that I got this ring, it's really, it's cool.
It's a great, it's a great feeling. Just unbelievable. It's like just having memories of it. You just want to relive it over and over again. Just, just wish we had a chance at stake.
It's really great. It's like something that I think we'll never forget. And like, it's bringing us closer, and we'll always be close for that.
Yeah, I think what James said, that, that's something that when they come back for their, for their 20th high school reunion, that will be the number one topic.
Well, and thank you for the opportunity for us to, to talk a little bit on the success we had in the 2008 season. I've been coaching high school football since 1979. And, you know, at all levels, but this is my, my third year as a head coach. And to, and to win the CIF championship with a group of kids that we had was just unbelievable. They, like you'd heard before, we had a little setback last year in the semifinals, but their hard work and dedication, and just the will of the, of all of the players on the team, but especially the seniors, who, they won a championship every single year that they've been here. A league championship, and then to finalize it and put the icing on the cake with the CIF championship. I was just happy that it was under my watch, and I appreciate all of the kids that played football here at Perakely, and looking forward to a successful 2009 season.
You know, in closing, for me, I just want to thank all these guys, especially all the seniors. That, you know, in coaching, you wait a long time to, to get an opportunity to win a championship. There's a lot of coaches that have never been able to, to say that they've done that. And I owe it all to these guys. These guys ran for me the whole season. And I'm glad that the, that we all get to reap the benefits from that. So, thanks to all you guys.
Thank you, Coach. Yeah, they'd like to quit running about now. Okay, moving on. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, on the agency calendar, are there any items to be removed?
No, sir. I think there's a couple you are going to recuse yourself from.
Yes, that'd be, isn't that RCC 3 and 4?
That is correct.
Okay.
A move that we adopt the consent calendar is currently comprised?
I second that.
Let's vote. Turning the meeting over to the Vice Mayor. Oh, it's unanimous. Oh, my wife owns property in the area, if not in the actual area. I'd like her consideration.
Let the director reflect. The mayor's left the room, and I have the chair now. Do I hear any motions on the remaining two consent calendar items?
Move adoption RCC 3 and 4.
Chair, second?
I'll second.
Call for a vote. It's unanimous with Mayor Paris recusing himself. Let the director reflect. The mayor's back in the room, and I turn the chair back over to him.
Thank you. On the council consent calendar, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
A move that we adopt the consent calendar?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous. We'll now open the joint public hearing. Public hearing on item number one. Hear the staff report from Elizabeth Brubaker.
There are no speaker's cards on JPH 1.
Let's waive the, the report, if that's okay. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, we'll waive the, waive the report. Is there any discussion? I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Any communications?
I'll move that, okay. I'll move that we adopt resolution number 2009 and resolution number 09-80.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. We'll now open public hearing, item number one. Hear the staff report from Planning Director Brian Ludiki.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this particular public hearing involves the appeal of a planning commission denial of a conditional use permit, specifically, conditional use permit number 07-05, which was a request, or is a request, for the development of a car wash on the northwest corner of 17th Street West and Avenue J. This project has quite a long history. It was originally heard by the planning commission in June of 2008. At that time, the commission expressed concerns over the proposed design of the car wash, as well as the effect that it could have on the surrounding area. They asked the applicant to go back and do a number of studies to discuss issues of noise and traffic flow, as well as whether or not the site was adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use. As a result of that, the applicant did have a traffic study and a noise study done for this project, and also revised it to eliminate a proposed coffee house that was a part of the original project design. What went back to the planning commission is the plan that you see before you here, which essentially involved a car wash and detail area. As you can see in the proposal, access for this would be off of a driveway on 17th Street West. Cars would come in here, queue up, go through the car wash in this, in this manner. Would be dried in this area. This is a detail area that is proposed also as part of the use. The noise and traffic studies that were conducted indicated that there were no significant effects from noise in terms of the equipment that the car wash would use. Traffic study indicated that the project traffic would not create any worse of a level of service at the intersection of 17th Street West and Avenue J, which currently requires a signalization. The traffic study did recommend interim measures at that intersection that would essentially prevent left turns from traffic exiting from 17th Street West onto Avenue J. That was done as an interim measure, recognizing that in the long term, as a result of conditions that are on other projects in the area, a traffic signal ultimately is proposed to be installed here. The planning commission did review this revised plan. They did look at the information that was included in the city's, or in the staff's report to them. However, they felt that the size of the property was still not adequate to accommodate the uses proposed. They felt there was not adequate stacking area for cars that are, that are lining up. They also felt that the car wash use itself was potentially not consistent with the predominant medical office uses in the area. As we've indicated to you in the attachments to your report, staff's recommendation on this matter was for approval. Therefore, what you have is the planning commission denying the request despite the staff's recommendation for approval. As a result of that, your recommendation consists of two possibilities. You can uphold the planning commission denial and thereby deny the request. You could choose to overturn the planning commission's decision and approve the project with the original conditions of approval as recommended by the city staff. If you choose to go that route, we have indicated to you that we would ask three additional conditions be added onto this project. They essentially deal with the design aspects of the project and are largely in response to what we've seen over the last year as a result of activity and discussion by the city's architectural and design planning commission. Specifically, the screening of the parking lot from the street, the revision of the elevations to be more architecturally compatible with the surrounding uses, and the adding of a parkway planter, which is a design feature of streets that the architectural design planning commission is looking towards. That is the basic information on the project. If you have questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them at this point. I have a question for Mr. Ludiki, if I could, Mr. Mayor. On this, on the stacking, how many parking spaces are we talking about for drying and finishing up here? The city's zoning code requires for drive-through facilities a minimum of seven stacking spaces. This particular project, I believe, has 10 on it. The commission was not convinced, however, that that was adequate for the car wash.
How come you didn't want the coffee house?
I don't know that that was a decision on the part of the city staff. I think that that was done by the applicant in response to concerns raised by the planning commission that there may not be adequate room for circulation and parking if the, if the coffee house was included as a part of the project. So, that was the applicant's proposal back to remove the coffee house. It wasn't necessarily a request from city staff.
So, how did the city staff determine what was adequate? What was your methodology?
In terms of parking?
In terms of the drying the cars off?
Okay. We, we took a look at, at some other facilities in town. We also asked how many, how many employees were proposed for the, the car wash use itself. Based on all of that, we felt that the, the amount of drying area that the applicant has proposed would be adequate. There is, at some point, a, and this is one of the discussions that we also had with the planning commission, the, the city's stacking requirement of seven cars, we think is adequate, because for things like car washes, it's been our observation that largely, you, you reach a point where people will not go there if they see a, a line that's too long. Given the fact that there were an adequate number of stacking spaces by city code, in fact, a little bit above that, we thought that that would take care of, of any potential problem of the cars. And the discussion was actually whether, whether these cars would actually start queuing around and back out onto 17th Street West. From my perspective as the planning director, I don't think that's realistic, but it was a concern. And, you know, the commission also noted that, well, if, if they only backed into this area, they were concerned that if people were trying to get to this detail area, there might be some blockage. And yes, that may occur at times, but I don't think it would be a common part of, of the operation. That's the reason that, as we looked at it from our perspective, and we, we took the zoning ordinance perspective of, is the si, is the size of the site adequate in shape and size, and can you accommodate the number of employees that are going to be parking there, and the number of cars that we assume are going to be going through at a particular time? We thought that that would be, would be sufficient for it.
Surely, they didn't deny it because they thought it would be too successful?
I, I didn't hear that, that thought. You know, I, I think that they looked more at the issue of, number one, was the circulation adequate for the property? Number two, that this kind of, and it's a little bit of a harder thing to describe, but the issue of appropriateness, I guess, in the neighborhood, where you have medical office buildings as an outdoor kind of car wash, where you've got drying activities and things of that type, and appropriate use in that setting.
I'm wondering if we should, in the future, not, not this time, but in the future, have somebody from the planning commission, whenever we have one of these situations where they've denied it, and now it's being appealed, come and tell us what's going on. And is that appropriate?
Well, as they're the, they're the council's commission, yes, you could require that if, if you want them to explain.
Well, you know, as soon as I require it, they'll put another jewel in my crown.
Okay.
Why don't you, why don't you discuss it with them and see what they think about that?
I'll, I'll bring the issue up with the, with the chairman. This is, as I said, a bit of an unusual situation in that the action of the commission is not what the original recommendation of staff was. So, it's a little bit, I, I feel a little bit awkward, because we're staffed to the commission, obviously, and I, I want to fairly present what their, what their view on this.
Actually, you're staffed to us. I mean, let's be clear on that. You're, you're staffed to the council. But in the, in the future, when we do have these situations, let's see if we can have maybe the chairman come and give us his view.
I'll, I'll discuss that issue with him.
Okay, great.
Mayor, Mayor Paris, I have one question. I, I wanted to get some clarity on the coffee house. So, clarify, that means that obviously, there's going to be a retail somewhere to take money. So, are we under the assumptions, then? What was originally proposed was an area set aside to be able to make coffee, and they felt that because it was on the property, that would create all this additional intensity?
Yeah, actually, the, the, the coffee area, I think, as I recall, was, was a building located in this area that would have.
Oh, so it was a separate entity?
It was a separate entity on the site. The, the applicant, who is undoubtedly here, could probably provide you a little more clarity on that, but.
Yeah, because I couldn't see, obviously, you've got, this day and age, and knowing what I know in the coffee business, I mean, you can drop an area of. what I know in the coffee business, I mean, you can drop an area of coffee in and less than about an area of five foot by three foot, so I couldn't see that not being co-joined with the retail portion where you're taking money for the car wash, but anyway, that's just.
I think it was designed as more of a separate operation.
Do you have the other plan there also that shows the coffee shop?
I may in the file, I can.
Was that recommend, did you recommend that site? Was there enough stacking and enough parking for the coffee shop?
From our perspective, yes. There was sufficient parking and there was sufficient stacking to take care of that. But as I said, the commission was, you know, extremely concerned about that particular plan. They felt it might be too much for that site.
Brian, go ahead. Would the coffee shop, would they enter and exit the same egress and ingress?
You know, I would have to go back and look. I think that, I don't recall if they had another driveway included as a part of that right offhand. But as I recall, this was pushed back a little bit, and this coffee shop did occupy a space that was up towards the Avenue J frontage.
So like the coffee bean place on Avenue J?
Something of that type. It was not a sit-down, really, operation as much as it was more of a quick mixer type of thing.
Brian, could you refresh my memory on the zoning and use, which on this map would be to the right and to the bottom of the map, across the street on Seventeenth and.
Okay. This area here, as well as this area here, are both used for medical offices. At the time that this project was filed, this area was, or this site was designated commercial and zoned as commercial plan development. It has since been re-designated on the general plan as Office Professional, but obviously has not been rezoned at this point. But once again, it was a commercial designation when it was, when the case was originally filed.
Thank you.
I understand that it's a full service, right? Car wash, not just a drive-through?
Yes, right. It's where people take care of the vacuuming and all of that.
But is it just related to the cleaning of the vehicles? I mean, do they do oil changes or anything like that there?
No, that's not proposed, is my understanding. They are simply dealing with either the cleaning of the cars or the detailing of them, you know, for more waxing and.
Well, one thing I wondered was, how many car washes are in the near vicinity?
I believe the closest one that is similar to this would be the one at Valley Central Way and Lancaster Boulevard, associated with the Chevron and McDonald's site. I believe that is the closest one.
That's not a full service, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is. It's an oil change close to.
Yeah, it's actually got a little bit more, but the car wash is a full service.
Shows how often I wash my car.
No more questions from me at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Liddick. Let's go with the speaker cards now. Let's start with the applicant, and then we'll go to the people who are in opposition. I have a question of the city attorney. One of the speakers is Jew Down. Jew Down is an attorney who I, we are co-counsel on a couple cases. Is that a problem?
I don't think he would qualify as a source of income. Are you receiving income from him?
No. Well, I mean, it's a contingency case, but I would not be receiving it from him.
Right, and he's not interested in the, I mean, he's the speaker, but he's not one of the parties?
Well, let's make him the first speaker and let's find out.
Let's find out.
Mr. Allen, do you own any part of this?
I do not, Your Honor.
Okay, no.
Can I just call you Your Honor? These habits die hard.
They accuse me of acting like that, so don't feel bad.
Please, it's not Your Majesty, right?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd first like to reiterate that in reviewing the record here, at every stage, at the Planning Commission level, staff, your staff, have recommended that this project be approved. And if you'd like to bring back the coffee shop, by the way, we have no objection to that. And we agree wholeheartedly with what staff had to say this evening about the project and the feasibility of the parking and the stacking not being a problem. With respect to some of the comment that was made by the public last time regarding the adjacent uses being medical office in nature, I would point out that the property just to the west is a radiology facility that does MRIs. And I can assure you that the person in the tube is not going to hear the car wash. If you've ever had an MRI, these are extremely loud machines. And the noise study that was presented by the applicant demonstrated that the decibel level would be somewhere around sixty, where the city minimum requirement is seventy. So it vastly exceeds the requirement. There's no problem there. And as far as the car wash being adjacent to a bunch of doctors, I would submit that most of them like to get their car washed at least twice a week and would love to do it thirty yards from their office. I don't think that's going to be a problem. That having been said, I'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal and step aside at this point and allow the architect on the project to address any concerns that you might have with respect to the plans themselves.
Procedurally, normally, we allow the applicant unlimited time, don't we? Or do we?
That's, well, normally, we allow them an adequate amount of time to make their presentation. It's up to you to control the amount of time.
Okay. But if the three-minute rule doesn't apply to them, is that correct?
That's correct.
After everyone speaks, you will have a chance to do a rebuttal if necessary. But before you sit down, I would disagree with you in regards to the noise and the radiology. I mean, radiology is a much more sophisticated science than MRIs. And if the noise was sufficient enough to interfere with it, I would want to know that. I'm assuming the staff saying that it is not means that it will not disrupt those doctors in any way. But a lot of those procedures require a tremendous amount of concentration as they're, you know, pushing wires through people's bodies and making sure it doesn't make the wrong turn. I wouldn't want to be disturbed by noise if that was the case. And I'm assuming that the staff has recognized that and has taken that into account.
Yes, our heavy machinery is going to be encased in concrete so that the sound is minimized as much as possible. That will not be an issue. It's been addressed at the Planning Commission level and dealt with.
The other concern I would have is, you know, we, see, if I was a judge, I would confiscate that cellphone. The is, you know, we are the most business-friendly city in LA County, so I assume that means the world. But that could be an overstatement. So if the coffee shop is something that the staff thinks is appropriate, it's not something we can consider today. And, you know, I don't know that you want to go forward today if the coffee shop is something you really want, I mean, you know, the coffee drive-through is something significant to the project, for what that's worth. I mean, we can't approve something that's not in front of us right now. And I don't know that you're going to have the option to bring it back later because you've changed the whole design, and I doubt that staff would approve it, given the way you've designed it. So there may be something you want to talk to the applicant about before we actually vote. And with that, anybody else have any questions?
I have one from Mr. McEwen, and, you know, some of the comments that you made and see what, because I know when, as a plan comes to the Planning Commission or comes to us, we have, I'm sorry, not blowing my microphone. We have the ability to change the plan, but I don't know if this is just an appeal of a yea or nay, or do we have the ability, like we do on some things, to change? This is only a yea or nay, or?
No, on an appeal, you actually have the ability to modify it and to add a, other conditions or make changes to it on the appeal. The limitation to that is that if it's a matter that has not been considered by the Planning Commission, then it needs to be sent back to the Planning Commission. But if they've considered it, then it's open to your addressing it as part of the appeal on the ultimate decision.
So the staff's first recommendation was to recommend the plan with the coffee shop, and that went in front of the Planning Commission, so we could virtually take that old plan and say, we like this one the best?
That's correct.
Okay. Maybe we want to see a copy of it?
Are you guys prepared to do that?
We see a copy of it.
Yes, I believe so.
Does that mean you have the plan to show us?
That would be a question that I'll defer to the architect, who's been working closely with the city from the get-go.
I mean, this may be something you want to kick over two weeks.
I'll talk to my clients, see what they'd like to do in that regard.
Mayor Paris, why don't we just let him have a couple minutes?
Okay, why don't you do that? Take a couple minutes to decide what you want to do. Well, wait a minute. I still need the next speaker. I'm not going to hold the whole meeting up for that. So talk to everybody about the architect, and have the architect come up and talk to us.
Brian says he might have a plan. He has the plan. Brian, do you have a plan?
That'd be Mr. Okay, come on up. Hagobian? Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and staff. I do have the original coffee shop layout car wash here, if you guys would like to look over it later.
Actually, what I would prefer is for you guys to make a decision. If you want to present, if you want to present them both to us, I think that would require us to kick it over to the next meeting.
I understand. I'm the middleman. I'll do as they like.
Okay.
And I think I'm getting the thumbs up from.
That's what they would prefer to do? You would prefer to kick it over to the next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then let's just, I'm happy to hear from Nancy Schmidt, or is Nancy here?
Yes.
Do you want to speak tonight, or you want to come back the next meeting? Yeah, I'm pretty liberal. Come on up. Wait a minute, I didn't say that.
Pick your words carefully.
I'm amenable. How's that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Nancy Schmidt, and I am the owner's agent for two of the adjacent buildings, the one at sixteen sixty-nine West J, that's just east of the complex, and at sixteen seventy-two S J, which is on the southeast corner there. And I've managed the buildings for seventeen years now. I don't know how familiar you are. Have you watched the videos of the Planning Commission meetings that occurred last year and a half?
I have not, but my dentist is in the building next door, so.
Yeah, I would really appreciate it if you were leaning toward approving it.
We don't do that. We don't, that's not part of our procedure. Some of us do, some of us don't.
Anyhow, what we have covered in the past, the coffee shop was basically ruled out, I believe, because of the parking, the number of employees they would have to have. There was going to be like a ten-table coffee shop. It wasn't a drive-through, it was a sit-down restaurant. There's been a lot of discussion as far as traffic flow with, they've changed it several times, but in all the discussions that we've had, they've never come up with anything that seemed to be satisfactory to the Planning Commission. It was one of the issues. The other being, it's very inappropriate for the area. The doctors, I have four medical buildings actually on the block, and every doctor, every dentist, every surgeon, everyone has said they don't want that in the neighborhood, that they would not use it. They're, you know, it's going to be a nine-to-five business, for one thing. It's going to close at five o'clock. People get off work at five o'clock. People aren't going to be using it. They may have a mad rush at lunchtime, but other than that, I don't see a heavy use for anybody in the neighborhood. The Vazarani's live next door, their house and their business is right next door. They see a lot of children. Safety issues abound, and as they told you earlier, the traffic signal was, should have been put in about ten years ago, probably five or six at the latest. It keeps getting extended and put off, but I've been battling that one for a number of years. It's a really dangerous intersection. And it's just, there's so many issues that are, this is just the wrong location. In the heart of medical buildings all around it, it just, I mean, a small coffee shop itself might not be a problem. Dry cleaners or medical supplies or a small medical building. But a car wash just, you know, isn't appropriate in there. There is noise, even if you have the decibels down, there's still a lot of people, there's cars that, you know, if they hog the cars when they're ready, if someone isn't there, it just totally changes the tone. And we're in competition with Palmdale for, to keep, we pride ourselves on our medical buildings, to keep them, you know, nice, keep the whole area nice to retain our doctors and bring in new ones. And if we start turning it into an industrial area, it's not beneficial to anyone in the community. And I'm getting.
You're getting bailed, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would also suggest that, you know, if the doctors are concerned, they really do need to come to the meeting. Okay? Okay, let's continue this to the next meeting, and we won't take action on it today. Okay? Good. I'm assuming everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll now hear from David McEwen on new business item one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a draft policy, which was, is based on a policy that was provided to us by the Christian Legal Association, represented by the David Gibbs Law Firm. They're a nationally recognized law firm that handles similar issues to this in a variety of courts. And they, on behalf of that association, they have drafted this policy. I have made some changes to the draft that they provided so that it better fits our procedures in what I believe would be the correct way to proceed in light of not only the US Supreme Court case in Marsh versus Chambers, but also the Court of Appeals cases, the leading one of those being Pelfrey versus Cobb County out of the state of Georgia, the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals, in which I believe they have thoroughly analyzed the decisions, not only of Marsh versus Chambers, but of other appellate-level courts, trial courts, and the federal level, as well as some state court cases in dealing with this. And I believe that the, this policy clearly follows the holding in the Pelfrey versus Cobb County case, and I would recommend it to you. It guarantees that the one, the key thing in Marsh was that your policy, as long as there was no evidence that any particular religion was being advanced or derogated, that absent that evidence of practice, that the court would not review the content of individual prayers, but look at the overall prayer opportunity as a whole. And that's what this policy would do. It would ensure that we provide adequate access to all religious faiths to provide the invocation at council meetings. And it would, we would compile a list from a variety of sources that would be representative and inclusive of the religious organizations that are active within the city of Lancaster. And then an invocation speaker would be picked on a random basis to present the invocation at each council meeting. There are a couple of provisions in the policy that I think you need to specifically address, and that would be Section Two and Section Eight, both of them dealing with the basic, the same basic concept. As drafted, Section Two provides that the prayer or invocation would not be listed on the agenda as an official agenda item. And then Paragraph Eight provides that prior to convening the meeting, the mayor would call upon the invocational speaker for that evening to provide the invocation before the meeting is called to order. I've heard comments from various people both ways, whether that's advisable, but that is, that was part of the original policy that was provided to us by the Gibbs Law Firm. So I left it in with, subject to your decision as to whether that's how you would like to proceed or not proceed.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other change that I caught as I was going through it tonight. In paragraph, on page three of five, Paragraph Four, D and E, D refers to November of each calendar year, and then E talks about sending out letters. year, and then E talks about sending out letters of invoca... or invitation in December. If you're going to update it in November, you can't send the invitation letters out in December. So, I think both of those dates ought to be either December or November. And it doesn't really matter which one you choose. Both of the... Those two, D and E, should both be the same month, either November or December.
Okay. Thank you.
I had sent... I didn't know... We got to this point here, and we have this policy here. I'd sent Mr. Cilio an email. I made several changes, about five or six changes to the policy and stuff, but I didn't get a response to see if that's where we... if we were on track on that, or any response back from...
I had responded to Dave that all of those changes I thought were good and should be incorporated. Sorry if you didn't get that passed along.
And the changes were incorporated.
Any other questions?
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
On point number two, the prayers shall not be listed or recognized as an agenda item for the meeting. I don't agree with that. I would rather it stay on the agenda.
Isn't she terrific?
I would concur with that. I was going to hold that off till after we'd heard from speakers, but since you brought it up, I don't think, since we are selecting the invocational speaker, I don't think we're going to fool a judge, should we get sued, that it's not part of the meeting, since we're still selecting the speaker that's held in our chambers. It's got the same sort of feeling as a tax dodge. And to go along with that, number eight, that we would have the invocation and the prayer prior to the start of the meeting, it doesn't feel right to me not to have the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag of our country not occur during or after the official start of the meeting.
Maybe we just ought to get a clarification to... Was there a legal question about item number two?
The... I think the reason that that was incorporated into the policy was to add an additional argument that you could make if challenged, that this... The practice of the invocation was really not part of the governmental meeting, which it was presented.
I appreciate the... You know, I've seen cases turn on less. However, I think the entire council agrees with me, and I think the city agrees with me, that this is a city that believes in prayer. And, you know, and I'm prepared to put it on the ballot, and let's let the people tell us if they believe we should pray. And if they want us to pray, it should be part of the meeting. And so, that's one of the things that I'll be discussing tonight. So, the speaker cards... The people who have speaker cards should be prepared to address that if they want. And, you know, I... Like I said before, nobody's going to tell me how to pray, and I'm not going to tell anybody else how to pray, and we should have a prayer as part of the meeting. And it's pretty simple to me. I mean, and the Constitution is pretty simple to me, that if we made an ordinance where we tell people how to pray, how are we not interfering with religion? I mean, it is... It's absurd to me that we're even having this argument. But, you know, I've had more absurd arguments, so let's go. Let's open it up to the speakers, and let's appropriately start with Bishop Hearn's.
Mr. Mayor and the Council Vice Mayor and all of you who are here today, I'm thankful to be here for this purpose. Nineteen ninety, when I came onto the council, I asked for prayer to be started before the council, and at that time, we instituted having prayer before the city council. And at that time, shortly afterwards, I did get some letters from ACLU. But my not being a lawyer and not smart enough to deal with that, I didn't respond.
That may have been the smarter move.
I didn't respond at all. And then later on after that, we started a mayor's prayer breakfast, for which the Lord gave to me to do. I believe that without my... Without a doubt in my mind, that if we don't ask for wisdom from God, we're not going to get where we need to get to. I... One of the wisest men that ever lived on earth, King Solomon, he had a discussion with the Lord on one occasion, and God said, "Well, come on, let's talk about it." And he asked Solomon, "What would you like for me to give you?" And Solomon didn't hesitate to say, "I don't need any money. I don't need popularity. I don't need any politics. I just need you to give me wisdom on how to go in and out before your people." And ladies and gentlemen, I would not want to be sitting on the council where you are if there could not be prayer, because I don't think I would be able to function very well. So, I say that our city, city of Lancaster, without a doubt in my mind, is a city that believes in God. Now, we never kept anybody from praying like however they wanted to, whatever name they wanted to use, if I didn't want to hear it. I just kind of closed my ears and let them go ahead and pray anyway. And we had a few of those. But the key here is, when I want to pray, it's got to be the one that has power, as far as I'm concerned, and that is in the name of Jesus Christ. And so, again, I urge you to put this together. I know that the way you have it... I have not had a chance to look at the ordinance, but I believe it's going to be what I would like to see. So, I thank you for allowing me to come before you, and I urge you to stand tall, no matter what. I would say that we don't want to alienate, we don't want to treat anybody bad, or any of that, because that would not please Jesus either. But I do think this, that we ought to stand tall and say, "Jesus, I love you enough to call your name, even if it meant me being recalled." God bless you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Before council this evening, there was a lot of love in this room. People that had differences of opinion came together in love and harmony and civic unity. It was just wonderful. And that's why I come here, to find the things that unite us instead of divide us. I was thinking back, you know, the truth is comprehensive knowledge, and it has to embrace a lot of different factors. I study a lot of different things. One of them is biblical archaeology. And back in the day of King Solomon, there were temples that they're now excavating that show that the worship of the goddess, the fertility cult that was the religion before Yahweh, coexisted in many of these temples. So, the state had never really succeeded in eradicating other religions. Now, when you think about today, the Sharia law advocates, they don't see any distinction between the separation of church and state. It is the thing. It is one. In reality, people's differences have an impact on the public decisions they make. So, they're hard to separate completely, but that's the reason we try in our society to separate the church from the state, so there aren't those divisions. Now, I talked last time about how we can acknowledge the presence of God. God is everywhere. God is all things. God is obvious and apparent. And when you feel that in your heart, that's enough. I don't want to see our city in a fight. I don't want to alienate the people that don't believe exactly like the majority do. I tell you, I was raised Lutheran, and you know about the Reformation and what Martin Luther did. And we were taught, and this was overt, that the Jews were good people, but they were damned because they didn't believe in Jesus and they were going to hell. On the other hand, the Catholics were something far worse, and they were a special place in hell. This division goes on today. In Ireland, there's still Catholic Protestants who are blowing each other up, Sunni Shia, blowing each other up, all because it's like a Bears-Packer football rivalry. That's the thing that I want to see out of the council. Let's praise God, acknowledge God, love God, and ask for God's wisdom, but we don't have to say the things that are going to get us sued. So, if we're going to proceed with that, at least let us put together for our religious community a fund that will pay for the suit that the ACLU will bring. That's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Anna Menezes?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Anna Menezes. I'm recent here to the community and a proud member of Lancaster Baptist Church. I would like to commend you, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, and the rest of you council members, for your faith, your courage, and your humanity in allowing invocations, which sometimes do mention the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, to continue and to vote on this new proposal that you have, and hopefully there will be a reasonable conclusion to that for all of us. You did ask for input, Mayor, as far as would you like this referendum to go to the people as far as voting on the invocation prayer. Two cost factors. One cost would be extremely burdensome, turnout would be possibly low. And three is, I for one, as a voter, am tired of our things getting appealed, appealed, appealed. And as a lawyer, you know that as well. I would not like to see it brought to the voters. Only in America, as we see before us here in our council chambers, do we see in God we trust. I'm proud as American of that. The ACLU and other organizations of special interest would attempt to silence your voices, our voices. The way that you have your proposition, your thing in the petition, I believe, that you have before you to look at, it allows for all religions to be present and to be able to speak. My only concern on this is, if I heard properly, on a list of various religions within the community, is what would preclude, let's say, Wiccan or other people of that persuasion to bring forth their desire to speak. As an American, I am very proud to be before you and speak, and thank you for that privilege. I've usually spoken before the Board of Supervisors many years ago in union issues in Sacramento, and it is my privilege to be here and speak before you. God bless you and continue the fight.
Thank you. Robert, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Paris. Before I start my time, can I ask a quick question really quick? By me filling out the speaker card, according to the Brown Act, that enables me to speak on any issue I want to, if I'm going to criticize or praise somebody, talk about something personal or public, unrelated whatsoever? Is that correct?
Well, right now, the only thing you can speak on is New Business Item.
Yeah, of course, right.
But if you do it at the open mic for the speakers, you can say anything you want.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's go ahead. I want to have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day you've given us. Thank you for our country's rich today of Christian history and ability for anyone to speak or believe freely in this land. I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ, who is one true God. Amen. I just prayed a sectarian prayer because I can, and because it's the opposite of what the ACLU desires. No one told or invited me to do so. If I offend the ACLU, that's too bad. They offend a lot of us, and they offend me. And for now, I wish to go on offending the ACLU. If the ACLU mandates to anyone in this council chamber on how to pray, they will be in violation of the Brown Act. Since the ACLU wants to restrict religion, let me say this. Bible indicates that Christians are the salt of the earth. Salt can be used for preserving, seasoning, and cleansing. However, I want to share another great theological application regarding salt, and that is, we all know what salt can do to slugs. So, if the ACLU wants to desire to have a legal meltdown with a second lawsuit on their hands, I'll be more than happy to dissolve them if they wish. They can come back to me and recite the Brown Nose Act after they have been humbled. The ACLU bullies our city in threatening our officials, instructing you to tell our citizens how to pray and what to pray in our meetings, and have the nerve to claim that what we're doing is unconstitutional? If our city follows ACLU recommendation, we would be in violation of the Constitution. City government would be establishing its religious preference that is ecumenical in nature by dictating to the citizens of various beliefs to refer to their deities in the general sense of God, lumping them all together, thus requiring them to compromise their individual soul liberty and the uniqueness of their faith. This atrocity must not happen. Not to mention the faulty argument that prayers must be generalized as not to offend anyone, yet with the ACLU and the superior intellect, they forget to mention how atheists will not be offended, even since a generalized prayer is not what they believe in in the first place. American Civil Liberties Union, they're anything but American, anything but civil, and they lack the proper understanding of what liberty even is. Mr. Eliasberg comes into our town with his elitist, poison ivy elite degree from his education, twisting words to build a straw man argument. He may be a legal expert, but that does not mean he interprets the law properly. In my opinion, like most legal experts, he perverts the law. Our present company excluded, of course, Mayor Paris, Mr. McEwen. Mr. Eliasberg, I know he's watching out there, Mr. ACLU. We read your comments in your manifesto to our city and your quotes for local paper. This council never told anyone to pray or give invocation, never told anybody what to say. We have no city ordinance establishing an official government sanction of religion. There is no official church for me to go to to worship and belong to the city. The government must recognize religion, but it cannot establish or hinder it. Recognizing a religion and establishing are two different things. If the ACLU wants something to tear apart, how about they start with Mr. Eliasberg's ridiculous Ivy League diplomas? That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, before I call the next speaker, and I recognize that, you know, I have brought this issue to the forefront, I'd like us to be clear about something. The issue is whether or not this is a community that prays before their city council meeting, and whether or not they seek God's guidance in how they run the city. This is not an indictment of the ACLU. I think the ACLU oftentimes exercises poor judgment, but I have seen the ACLU exercise magnificent judgment at other times. Too often, we start questioning the people involved instead of the issue involved. This is, to me, is a simple issue, and I will do everything I can to keep it focused on that issue. It's whoever stands in front of that microphone to do the invocation can pray to the God they believe in, including Jesus Christ. It's a simple issue, and if we allow it to denigrate into personalities, I think we're playing somebody else's game. And it is not the goal most of us have in mind. Darlene Peterson and then Pastor Chapel will be the last speaker.
I'm glad you clarified that this is a simple issue. I agree. Every day is, and I don't agree with you very often.
Darlene, that's why I love you so much.
I would rather be home watching you on television, because this really is the best show in town, I have to tell you. While the clergy has asked for guidance and wisdom to be bestowed upon this council, you have received some guidance in the last few days. As to having the wisdom, the jury is still out. I did read your "Have prayer, will travel" policy, and after reading all of the whereas clauses, it sounds good, but in all honesty, you just tweaked what you said you were already doing. Your "Have prayer, will travel" policy might calm the waters, but don't pull the oars out yet. In my opinion, you are on the verge of creating a tsunami for the new council to clean up afterwards. This is not a fight for freedom of speech. You already have that. This is, in reality, a fight for freedom of venue, to pray where you want to pray, not if you can pray. And I ask you, please don't politic on the backs of religion. Faith is in your mind and heart. You must know, if you really have faith, you don't have to prove it to others by chest-thumping or other showmanship gestures. If need be, silence is golden, and your Creator is not hard of hearing. Amen. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Oh, I got time left over.
Indeed, you do.
You asking for miracles? I just performed one.
Thank you, Darlene. And Paul Chapel?
At President Obama's inaugural this year, this past year, Rick Warren prayed in Jesus' name, and others prayed, I'm sure, in various other ways. But the fact is that every president since George Washington has recognized his need for God's wisdom. The Bible says in Proverbs, Chapter One... Bible says in Proverbs, Chapter 1, and Verse 7, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom." And the word "fear" there simply means a respect or an awe, and I thank God for the history in this nation of people, including yourselves, who recognize that we need God's guidance in making these decisions. The fact of the matter is, this wasn't a real divisive issue in this city until just a few weeks ago. We have great needs with crime and gangs and bringing business to the city. We have serious work to get done, and this has been brought upon you, and I thank you again for the stand that you're taking. I was in Israel a few weeks ago, and as I visited also the West Bank, I too sensed the tension brought about by religions and differing beliefs. But there is not going to be a great cure for the worldwide problems by stopping prayer in Lancaster. In fact, as we consider the great needs that we have, we truly need to pray and seek the face of God. And I am guilty of believing that Jesus Christ is the way, the truth, and the life, but as an American, I respect every other religion in this city, and I thank God for their freedom to worship as they believe. I love them. I count them as my neighbors and my friends. But when I'm asked to pray, I will pray in the name that I believe is the name above all other names, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I thank you again for the stand you're taking, and we'll be praying for you. And we do believe that freedom of speech includes the venue, and we're glad we have the opportunity from time to time to ask God for help right here in this room. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards on this. So let's close the public hearing. And Council members?
I see this issue, our last speaker was right. I don't think this issue is divisive. I think it's fairly clear-cut. The ACLU, and I'm not trying to personalize, I'm just looking at their position on this particular issue, is that in a public body, there should not be sectarian prayer. It's my position, and I believe the position of my fellow council members, that sectarian prayer is okay. It's the freedom of speech issue. It's an issue of, are we going to allow prayer? Rather than dictating what an individual can pray, we're simply saying, you can be true to your conscience and pray to your God as you see fit. I think the methodology in this policy is sound, that we send out invitations. All those who are interested can participate in the process. I think what we'll get back is religious entities participating in roughly the same percentages as exists out in the community. I can't think of a fairer way to do it. So as a whole, I agree with the policy as presented. When it comes time to vote, I'd like to delete Item Number 2. I believe the prayer should occur during the meeting, as well as deleting Number 8. So it leaves both the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance to occur during the meeting and not before. I did have an email today. Mr. McKeon, maybe we need clarification on that. There was an email questioning, who can actually do the invocation? If we send an invitation to a religious organization, they respond. Does it have to be the senior pastor? Can it be a designee from the senior pastor?
No, I would say they can designate whoever they choose. It can be more than one person, in fact, and we can select randomly among all those people, but it wouldn't have to be the senior pastor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Paris, I just wanted to read a couple of items that was included in the paperwork that we were given, and it's available online, so everybody had a chance to take a look at it. It says in one of the "whereas"s, "In March versus Chambers, the United States Supreme Court rejected the challenge to the Nebraska legislature's practice of opening each day of its sessions with a prayer by a chaplain paid with taxpayer dollars," and specifically concluded, "The opening of sessions of legislative and other deliberative public bodies with prayer is deeply embedded in the history and tradition of this country." And that was one of the things that was very important to me when we decided to put "In God We Trust" in the chambers, is that it is our national motto, and that historically, I'd like to see us reserve some of these habits that we've had. In my opinion, this is just, like I said last time, is just chipping away at American values also, and I agree that we delete Item Number 2 and 8 and proceed with the policy, and I appreciate. The other thing that was added in here, I wanted to read it out loud. Of course, I've lost my place. I guess I'll end with that. Lost my place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a problem if we change for D and E rather than picking a specific month? Can we just say once each year?
That will work fine.
So deleting D and E?
No, those stay in, but the timing would be annually.
Okay. As opposed to selecting a specific month?
Well, would we actually just go ahead and put maybe September? Would we start with the month of September, or?
I think if we leave the, if we just refer to it on an annual basis, the clerk can decide when she does that.
Mr. Man, anything?
Yeah, I too. I think that Councilman Cilio's comment, I think that we're just skirting around the issue when we take it off the agenda, and I think that I am fine with dropping out 2 and 8. And given the methodology that we're going to use, as I stated earlier at the last meeting, I think we've been historically inclusive. I think Mayor Hearns made a comment that I don't think there's been any time that I'm ever aware of in the city that we've not been, so I think that I'm comfortable with it.
Vice Mayor, before you begin, my two sons are home from college, and they're in the audience, and they should come down and sit with their grandmother.
No pressure.
The cameras are on you now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, there is one thing that has always stopped the ACLU dead in its tracks, and that's a comma. And that's the comma that happens right after the Establishment Clause, and they can never make that jump to the Free Exercise Clause. And we should not restrict our citizens, their First Amendment right, to pray in the manner that they feel fit. And I agree with everybody else on the changes.
What do you all think about putting it on the ballot at the next election so it doesn't cost any more money?
I think when you said that it was a fairly straightforward issue, I don't see a need to put it on the ballot. I don't see that as divisive. I think we should just adopt the policy and be done with it. I don't think a vote is going to affect whether we get sued or not, frankly, so why even go through the exercise?
My thinking is, it gives the community an opportunity to say, this is a community that prays, and we want the council to pray. And if they don't, let them tell us they don't. It certainly seems to be an issue that has attracted the attention of people outside our community. Even the Palmdale media will probably call me King Rex for wanting to do it. So let's take that off the table. Let's find out, do the citizens of Lancaster want us to do this or not?
So clarification then would be, we would, if we adopt this tonight with those modifications, run with that until the next?
The next city election.
I'm fine with that.
I'll move that we adopt this policy with the changes, the Number 2 and Number 8 taken out, and the changes to, I think it was 4D and E.
Till the next city election.
Well, we could make the decision at that time. It would be, you know, when the city election comes up, and if we get an advisory vote that's different, then the council can make, whatever council is sworn in at that time can make the decision based on the citizens' vote.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's my motion.
The motion tonight is to adopt the policy?
Adopt the policy with the changes.
Okay.
I'd second that. And I would direct the city attorney to prepare a ballot initiative for the next election, and we will vote on that at the next city council meeting.
Can we bring that back at the September 22 meeting?
Yes, we can.
Thanks.
Okay, great. So there's a motion in a second. You prepared to vote? Let's vote.
It's unanimous.
Maybe if we could, Mr. McKeon, are you able to bring it back, and would it be okay to bring it back in October rather than September 22?
Uh, yes.
In October, if that would be okay with the mayor? Can we, do we still have time to get it on the ballot then?
Yes, we still have time to get it on the ballot.
I'll be bringing all the resolutions for the election in, the first meeting in November, and that time is when you would adopt all resolutions for ballot initiatives, et cetera.
Okay, good.
Do you want time to discuss the content of it ahead of that meeting, or would you want to bring it back at that meeting?
Actually, in the event that we're in a court battle, I want it as part of the court record that this is something that's going to be voted on. And so if, in fact, you know, there's three votes on this council to put up before the voters, if there are, that may be of some value, it may not be, but if we're talking about principles of democracy, it seems to me that giving it to the voters is of some significance. So let's do it early October. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Now to the council agenda, there is none. City manager, any announcements?
I have a short report and one announcement. The report deals with the tobacco ordinance issue that came up at the last meeting. Just to bring the council and the public up to speed, we have instituted compliance checks on all the businesses. The sheriff will begin a, the first compliance check relatively soon. Obviously, the date won't be announced. And then we will be proposing to you at some future date, possibly an increase in the fee for a tobacco ordinance that would fund two additional compliance checks throughout the year. We also are looking at other aspects of the ordinance in terms of stiffer penalties for not complying with the ordinance, and we would bring an ordinance back to you in October for that issue. The second item I'd like to announce--
Thank you for getting on that, by the way.
Oh, sorry. Did you have a question?
No, thank you for doing that in a timely manner. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate the staff in our finance department, housing, city attorney, and Kelvin, who's been instrumental in doing that. The second issue I really want to point out, I think, which has just been a tremendous community partnership, and it's the Neighborhood Impact House. This one's in the Paiute. This is with Grace Chapel, and the Paiute neighborhood with Grace Chapel and Pastor Chris Johnson. This Saturday at 3:00, there will be a celebration of that house for the neighborhood. It's on council calendars, and the public's been invited. It's really a neighborhood celebration. The thing that's so good about this project is it really is a good public-private partnership, where the city doesn't try to run the house and such. The city facilitates, and the faith-based community runs the house and provides tremendous benefits to that neighborhood. So we're very excited about this, and we hope the public will join us for that.
Thank you.
That's my announcement, sir.
Okay. Before the city clerk makes her announcements, I would like to ask the council's consensus regarding speaker cards and engaging the speakers. There seems to be a lot of controversy about that. Is there any concern from this council as to how I can, how I talk to the speakers?
I think it would make for a smoother running meeting if we would allow the speaker to have an unfettered three minutes, and if you have some comments to make after they sit down, that would prevent the back-and-forth banter.
Well, the back-and-forth banter is what I'm attempting to accomplish. It's recalled having a discussion. I was thinking that there should be some rules so that we understand it, and I want the council's consensus of this, is that if the speaker asks one of us a question, we will respond to it. But be advised, you don't get to dictate my response. I mean, if you ask me a question, I will respond in any way I want, and so will the rest of the council. Barring that, I guess the rule should be that we let them do it uninterrupted. And, you know, city clerk, if you want to enforce the rules, I'll make you sergeant of arms, and you can throw something at me as I start to lean towards the microphone.
My kicking under the table hasn't worked.
That's correct.
Yeah, I noticed that.
From either side.
He's even not put fingernails on it.
Or if the speaker says they would like to have a discussion, we will make it a discussion. So those are the new rules. If you want three minutes uninterrupted, you can have them. If you answer, ask one of us a question, you've waived that, right?
And you get still three just--
And if, when you come up, you'd like to discuss an issue, I think that you should tell us, and I think that should solve the issue. Fair enough?
Well, I think, yeah, if we keep, if it's not going to be unfettered and they ask a question, then they realize that the clock is still ticking.
That's correct. This clock is still ticking.
And they ask you for an answer, and if your answer takes two more minutes, well, they lost.
And asking a lawyer a question and expecting it to come in under three minutes is really--
So if you're smart, ask your questions at 2 minutes and 55 seconds.
That's right. That would be the smart move.
Well, can we clarify, does that cut the mayor off after three minutes, too?
That would require a vote of the people. Okay, moving on. So now we got the rules. You can write them down. You can put it on the, whatever we give the people when they come in, and then I don't have to fight with Ms. Latanzi and Mr. Falca anymore. Okay. Now, city clerk, any announcements?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find the speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out very clearly and concisely, in case the council or the city staff needs to get in touch with you. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be courteous of the three-minute rule to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process of the meeting. Also, as much as we do respect the fact that you would like to make comments before your time begins, please know that your time begins as soon as you start to speak. Our microphones are very sensitive and able to pick up your voices, therefore, we respectfully request that you do not adjust them. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. The first speaker we have is Boy Scouts Troop 76, Liberty Patrol.
You guys like the light, didn't you? I know how it is.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity you gave us to lead you in the pledge today, and let you know, we're excited to be here. We are Troop 76, Liberty Patrol. We're new to Lancaster and Palmdale. We just formed in October of last year, so our boys are young. We have four scouts and two tenderfoot. We're very grateful for this opportunity to work on our merit badge for citizenship in the community. That's why we're here this evening, and if there is an opportunity later, I understand we may get to meet with a couple of you personally. We'll thank you in advance if we do get that opportunity. Since I have a few minutes, I'd like to just introduce those who were able to make it today. Starting here on your right is Alex Nelken. Please stand. Those two, those two are our tenderfoots. Then next to him is Malcolm Owens. And Nathan Folsom. And next to him is our, one of our council members, Nathan's father, Gene Folsom, who's with us. So we do thank you for allowing us to come this evening.
Thank you. Now, before they leave, they should talk to my two sons. They're both Eagle Scouts.
Yes, and my son over there is an Eagle Scout.
That's right, and Ron Smith's son is an Eagle Scout. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening again. I'm just about talked out, but I'll tell you one quick story. A week ago Sunday, I was walking through Walmart's parking lot trying to get into the place, and I didn't bring my boys with me, which was a good decision. There were people trying to get through, cars stopped on both ways, and as I was walking through, some crazy guy comes zigging in through there. Now, this is what I found out. I want the store surveillance tapes, but they won't give them to me unless I call the sheriff. The sheriff won't come out unless there's actually somebody hit. So Walmart sees all this stuff go on, and it's very demoralizing to me because the guy had a few choice words for me as he swerved by and almost hit me. So I would like to consult with him on proper manners. And I can't do that, and I can't get the law to take care of it. So, you know, I feel a little frustrated. And just one last thing in closing tonight, sir, thank you so much. You have helped expand my political power base. I used to just have the readers and the people who smoke marijuana. Now I have the people who believe in separation of church and state and all the other non-Christians. So that's going to be a pretty good deal. Thank you, sir.
Anything for you. Elaine McDonald. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elaine McDonald. I live at 43031 40th Street East in Lancaster, and I am access chair for AV High Desert Cyclists. And I'd like to thank the city of Lancaster for providing and maintaining the beautiful Sierra bike path. I often ride it and enjoy the safety that it offers, along with the beautiful plants that follow the path. About 18 years ago, I took part in the Lancaster Armegosa Creek Pathway Workshop. There were about 40 people that attended this community workshop to help the staff identify the issues for the pathway from Avenue K to Avenue H that runs adjacent to the freeway, including a bike path that could be used for commuting to work and recreation. We suggested benches along the pathway with shade, water fountains, a possible nature center, and suggestion, suggestion for, for a portion of the Armegosa project to be open to equestrians. Equestrians could access from Avenue H and Avenue I and around Lake Lancaster, which is at Avenue H. This would provide a connection to the proposed county-regional trail near Avenue H. After the workshop, a draft plan was prepared for comment by the workshop participants before presenting the plan to the planning commission and city council. An important goal was to plan for commuter and recreational pathways for bicycles or Class 1, which is a bike path or trail. The object for the Armegosa Creek Pathway was to make a connection with other existing or future bikeways, and at that time it was the Sierra Bike Trail. In March of 1992, that was 17 years ago, the Lancaster General Plan adopted a plan for the living environment identifying an urban primary trail along the Armegosa corridor between Avenue H and Avenue K. Over many years, I've stood here and I've spoke my concerns before different council members about the Armegosa Creek bike path, bicycle lanes, routes, and trails in general. Each time, I've been directed to make an appointment with staff to discuss my concerns. When I meet with staff, along with others who are heads of equestrian organizations and bicycle trails, they take our information and nothing happens. Nothing is done. So very little has been, been changed to bicycle path lanes and routes and trails. So I'm here, I'd like to see something happen with bicycle lanes and bikes and trails before I die. I've been doing this for almost 20 years. And if you haven't seen me before, I'm sure Mary Hearns has in the past and other council members. Thank you.
You know, so would I. If you would see Natalia at the back of the room, she will set up a meeting for us. It's going to be about four weeks, but I would like to meet with you in four weeks, and let's see if, what we can do, okay? Because I absolutely agree with you. Natalia, make sure you take care of that. Thank you. Michael Chavez. Michelle, I'm sorry.
My name is Michelle Chavez. I'm a member of the High Desert Cyclists and do most of my riding in the city of Lancaster. I'm here to talk about bicycle transportation issues. Bicycling is transportation. Bikes reduce congestion, improve air quality, enhance transit use, enhance livable communities, economic vitality, reduce energy consumption, and improve health. Some steps that Lancaster can take to become bike-friendly. Design and implement a transportation system that is accessible, safe, and convenient for bicycles. Create a cultural environment in which bicycling is regarded as a normal and preferred mode of travel. Improve accessibility and safety for bicyclists. That includes wide curb lanes, bike lanes, and paths that are safe, convenient, and connect as needed to origins and destinations. Cyclists must be able to ride safely on all roads and easily access the same destinations as automobile drivers. Education and enforcement of laws for bicyclists and motorists. Educate motorists about and how to share the road with bicycles and pedestrians. Improve travel safety through design, signage, and pavement markings. Respond quickly to maintenance problems on bikeways. Require pavement maintenance programs that alleviate hazardous and problematic pavement conditions for cyclists. Establish bicycle planning as a key component of the travel, excuse me, travel planning process. Accommodate bicycles on all roadway projects. Upgrade the road network to better accommodate bicycle travel. These improvements can be implemented at zero to low cost if done during construction or maintenance. Install bicycle-sensitive signal sensors. Develop effective, well-promoted cycling skills training programs, and promote cycling as transportation. I'd like to conclude with these few statements here about bicycling. Bicycles are viable transportation. Bicycles work better than cars for short trips. Cycling promotes health. Studies confirm this. Cycling is good for the environment, and cars create problems. Bicycling is cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Peterson.
Guys, stop knitting like this. I was going to give speech number two, but I want to switch to number three, okay?
Whatever you want.
I'm ready for, I've got a whole book full. I got, I want to talk about shopping. Last week, there were some people up here, they want revenge on this city for you putting this new Walmart.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay. I'd like to say to them, to those who have vowed to shop outside Lancaster to get revenge for the Walmart deal, I would like to suggest that they are cutting off their nose to spite their face. They are also penalizing innocent merchants. Another thing to consider is this. The next time they need the sheriff's help, Lancaster may not have enough patrol cars to go around. However, they can always call for help to the area where they spent their money, but they shouldn't wait up for them to arrive. Look at that. Can you?
Good for you.
I was going to talk to you about controlitis that some of you have regarding the speaker cards.
I've noticed they had that problem. I tried to put it, I tried to fix it tonight.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the order in which you call.
Oh, okay.
Can I go, oh, go ahead. What the heck? I don't think it's necessary to control this, because I think controlitis is a form of a sickness, and it has left a lot of ill feelings here. And there's no cure for it, but a lost election would go a long way toward curing the condition. In the meantime, a large dose of humility consumed by the affected council members couldn't hurt. In any event, don't call me in the morning. I don't take house calls.
Thank you, Darlene.
I'm going to go home. So there, you have something else to be thankful for.
Darlene, Darlene, I had, it's, it's, it's sherry up here.
Excuse me. I heard this.
Now, you know, I noticed that every time you come to that lectern, that you like to raise it.
Yes, I'm tall.
To your level. Now, I know that your mama raised you better than that, and you need to put it back down where it belongs, because the lady that was just before you was standing on her tiptoes, and she didn't know how to fix it.
Oh, I, you're right. You're right. And speaking, I will do it. And speaking of levels, last week you made in a remark that people hold the council to a higher level. This is not true.
People in-
I hold everybody to a high level. Him, and all these people, and you. Everybody, you're on the same level. Hi.
Someone on a, someone in a position of a planning commission is held to a higher level. You are absolutely right.
All of you, even the grocery clerk.
I'll, I'll talk to you about it later. Michael Limos? I know why you're here.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff.
Good evening.
I'm here to introduce you to another facet of the High Desert Cyclists of the Antelope Valley, and that is our charity work. Not only do we enjoy riding our bicycles for fun, recreation, and health, but we enjoy raising money for some of the charities of our local city. Twice a year, we hold two major rides. We hold two major rides a year. The first one being the Antelope Valley Fall Century. And a century bike ride is a ride of 100 miles or more, which is kind of a standard for measurement for a good bike rider. And we hold that in October, and it's been a great success. Last year, we rode up to Tehachapi and back, and a lot of our members really enjoy that. But their other primary ride that we hold is a Dan Stewart Memorial Ride held every Memorial weekend. This ride, we use to raise funds for charities in the Antelope Valley. Past five years, we have raised over $5,000 for Easter Seals. This past year, for the Antelope Valley Special Olympics. This past year, the Special Olympians and their parents came out, volunteered. We did a great ride. They are very grateful because, as you probably know, they are entirely funded by donations. They did not receive anything from Los Angeles or Southern California committees. They were so grateful to be a part of this ride. So that's one thing that we like to do out here besides ride our bikes in the blowing sand and dust. But we have a great time doing it, and smiles on some of those little kids and big kids' faces really make it worthwhile. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Kevin Welsh, Welsh?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. And it's kind of funny, I thought I was going to be first because I'm president of the AV High Desert Cyclists Bicycle Club. And I was going to give an overview of what the other speakers were going to talk about.
The darn vice mayor.
A little background on myself, I do endurance racing. I have a number of records, and I'm also an aerospace engineer at Nasa Dryden. I've had the good fortune to be featured in Antelope Valley Press over the years, and especially when I was doing the Bicycle Race Across America. And this is even hard for me to believe, but I've now been commuting from AV College out to Nasa Dryden for 30 years now on my bicycle. And so why is the bike club at the meeting? I think you've heard a lot of the comments tonight, and we're here to ask the city to help raise awareness of bicycles on the road and to make the Antelope Valley a safer place to ride a bicycle. And a good start would be to help provide and install share-the-road signs around the city, not just Lancaster, but Palmdale and LA County. And so, as Elaine said, we've had many meetings in the past with Lancaster, Palmdale, and LA County planners. And we've provided all parties with AAA maps, with highlighting the roads that are used by cyclists. We've discussed bike paths, trails, and need to focus on getting these paths connected. Currently, they're all disjointed. They really don't go anywhere. And, and as Elaine has mentioned, we have not heard feedback from these meetings. And I was going to introduce the other members since you've already heard from them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Egbert-Scream?
I think the vice mayor's been doing you a disservice. He should certainly arrange these cards by order of height.
You should have a more definitive policy.
I'm going to raise it, so-
I could tell you guys, all the studies about emotional contagion and why it's important to the placement of the speakers, and that if you have people that are hostile and toxic and just general mean demeanor, if you allow them to speak first, it infects the entire room, and then the creativity level of the entire council diminishes. These are robust studies. And why I attempt to change the cards around is I'd like to keep us as creative as possible. Now, it doesn't apply tonight, but there have been other nights when it did. Now, if we could go on.
By the way, the correct pronunciation is Egbert's, as in Dell Egbert's coffee.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I take no offense. Good evening, Mayor Paris.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Smith, and city council members and staff. I open my presentation to you with two questions for you to ponder amongst yourself. How do you define an ex-offender and parolee, and would you recognize one in your presence? I come before the council with the anticipation of gaining Lancaster City Council's interest in implementing an effective community partnership between the City Council Criminal Justice Commission, Los Angeles County Sheriff Department, Lancaster Station, with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, and the Antelope Valley Parole Division, Agents and a Parolee Liaison, to develop, formulate, and implement a reducing recidivism strategy initiative program for the greater Antelope Valley community that provides a cost-effective solution to the continued commitment of increasing public awareness and safety, the fight against crime, and reducing recidivism by successfully transitioning parolees on the right track once they are released into the community through human investment, through human investment, and to continue the mission of CDCR's rehabilitation reform program that was inaugurated May 2 of 2007, which is designed to prepare inmates for successful reintegration into their communities in order to reduce revictimization and recidivism. Through AB 900, it moves California away from outdated ineffective prisoner warehouse that breed more criminality to institutions that promote change and success. Fifty percent of all California prisoners released prior to 2006 were not assigned to any rehabilitation program or job assignment during their most recent prison sentences. The waste of human potential and the devastation to families is being alleviated as the inmates are preparing for success upon release by participating and completing the adult accredited and certified educational substance abuse vocational programs that has led landmark reforms to bring evidence-based programs and tools to turn prison bars into bridges of opportunity. Through our continued efforts in the Antelope Valley by developing, implementing this anti-recidivism program, we are increasing and providing effective community support to seek, secure, and maintain a collaborative partnership with the community to link to employment, employment, job placement, and training programs, reentry, and multiple agency resources for ex-offenders. Inform local employers and the community leaders of job and higher incentives. The WOTC program, which is the Work Opportunities Tax Credit, of up to 8,500 per qualifying employee per year for employers. FBP, Federal Bonding Program, provides fidelity bonds ensuring protection against employee theft or dishonesty ranging from $5,000 to $50,000 at no cost.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
You know, what I would like you to do, though, is talk to the Criminal Justice Commission, and if they're-
I did. I talked to Marvin Christ.
Okay. Let me have the handout and- Okay. Let me have the handout in, oh, we have one from each of the council.
And by the way, I am a parolee.
I'm not adverse to what you're saying.
Pardon?
I'm not adverse to what you're proposing.
I understand that. But I mean, and I'll, I'll talk to Marvin, and I'll submit a letter to your office for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Taylor Riddle. Is Ann here? Ann, raise your hand. Okay. It's an F. Sambranan.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm here just to say one simple thing, that I brought this object here about a year ago on Avenue K. I live at 2747 East Avenue K. And it seems like those homes are facing west, facing the main street of Avenue K. And for some reason, you know, we have a lot of problems there, you know, not only because the street sweeper doesn't do the job like they supposed to every other week. I call them several times, and they say, yes, we do, but so far, I notice you haven't been there for at least a month or more. So the breeze blows from west, east, and we have a lot of accumulation of all kinds of, you know, trash in there. And also, you know, we have these individuals that have those garage sales, yard sales, posting signs right on the street. So we get all that. And also, about 32nd Street East, there is that drainage they come down from the soccer field. That's getting ridiculous. All kinds of tumbleweeds, the water accumulating, and you can see the smell starting to pick up. So I don't know what, who I to call. I call people, and they say, yeah, we take care of it, but nothing had been done.
Mr. Bozignian, would you look into that for me?
Yes, we will.
Also, make certain we check the logs of when they actually swept, okay?
Okay. If afterwards, someone will get your name and contact information, we'll contact you this week.
Okay. And also, you know, because it's a main street and very busy, I have, you know, brought it up, that traffic is ridiculous, you know, not only on high speed. The speed limit is 50 miles an hour. And I think that's very high speed, because I haven't seen anybody yet, or say, 60, 70 percent of the traffic goes at least 70 or more. I, before I asked if the speed limit could be brought down a little bit, and they said, no, because it's part of the planning, or I don't know what. But anyway, you know, we have high speeders there, and they bring, you know, the sheriff once in a while with a black and white car, and of course, the devil turns into angel, so they never get picked up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, discuss with them the traffic engineering and the studies, and why we end up with speed limits the way we do, okay?
We will do that. We did do a speed look there, but we can also talk about enforcement as well.
Okay, thank you. Stacy Hummel, and that's our final speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Hummel. I'm with Newly Family, Inc. Today, we were again respectfully, but ultimately unlawfully denied a business license for our nonprofit mutual benefit statutory medical marijuana cooperative. This is in direct conflict with California state law, Proposition 215, SB 420, and the Attorney General's Guidelines. We were told ultimately that we were denied on the basis that federal law preempts state law. However, in San Diego v. Normal, the counties of San Diego and San Bernardino challenged California laws on the basis that federal law preempts state law. And in a published decision, the Court of Appeal for the Fourth Appellate District held that federal law does not preempt the state medical marijuana program, nor does it constitute an unlawful amendment of Proposition 215. We want it to be on record this evening that the City Council of Lancaster is aware of the precedent set, and though aware of that fact is still unlawfully denying us a business license. We don't want to fight. We want to work with the city. We are a nonprofit cooperative. We've been operating in the Antelope Valley in residential neighborhoods like we are allowed to by the state of California. We want to take it out of there. We want to put it into retail locations, as long as you're a nonprofit mutual benefit statutory cooperative, which we are. We ask that you instruct your finance and planning department now to issue a city business license. Thank you. And I also want to know, now that I can ask questions, since I said my little piece, on what legal basis is the city of Lancaster denying us the business license?
I think you're aware that the Criminal Justice Commission has reviewed this, and that it is coming back to us, and that we will consider an ordinance. Do we know when that's coming on, on deck?
My recommendation is to put it on the 22nd September meeting.
The September 22nd meeting, and we will deal with this issue then.
And I absolutely respect that. My one question then is, just because there isn't an ordinance.
Wait a minute, you're not allowed to do that. You let me talk.
Oh, wait.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Considering, Mayor Paris, considering that, that the state laws prevail, it doesn't matter whether or not the city has ordinances to decide, state law is such through SB 420 that as long as you're operating as a nonprofit cooperative, you are allowed.
I'm aware, I'm aware of the legal arguments, and what I'm attempting to do is to have this council deal with it, and vote on it, and make a decision, one, one way or the other.
So we can all.
I thought a lot of the testimony before the Criminal Justice Commission was compelling, especially the testimony from the oncologists.
Absolutely.
And we are aware that we are at legal risk. And so on September 22nd, we will deal with it, one way or the other.
Wonderful. Well, then, thank you very much. I look forward to that day.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might, I might add.
And please, don't make me stay here till midnight, because of, with a thousand speakers, because at midnight, I make terrible decisions.
Mr. Mayor, I might, I might add, too, that the, if we were to issue the building, or the business license today for a particular location where they want to do business, it may or may not be subject to the ordinance that would be proposed. It may not be consistent with that ordinance, and that would potentially cost them some additional money to relocate, so.
Well, I think what they really want is a decision, well, obviously, they'd like the decision to go their way, but they would really like is a decision. And if they disagree with us, then that's why we have courts.
Right, I agree with that.
So let's, let's quit dodging it, and let's deal with it. That's where we're at.
If we could, Mr. Mayor, if that could be an item that we put on the first meeting in October.
Yes, we could do that. Make it the first meeting of October. I'm probably not going to be here for the September meeting, anyway. And you probably want me here.
And I'm not going to be here on September 22nd.
We, we may not have enough for a quorum, I don't know. We'll see. Okay. All right, let's, let's go on. That concludes the, all the speaker cards. Are there any council reports? Mr. Mann? Counsel, Councilman Mark?
I have two things you can give your.
I'm going to do this. Okay. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
If I could, one thing is, I wanted to update the mayor, and I asked the director of the AVTA about the college bus passes and everything. Right now, the AVTA is working on getting, there's some grant money for job training, and so they're looking at getting that money to actually pay for the bus passes for not only college students, but anybody going down to LA for technical training or job enhancement, kind of stuff. The other item I wanted to bring up, Mr. Bozignian, I've been talking about, you know, talking to each of you, but we thought it would be good to, to do it at an open meeting, give you sort of an update on something that we're working on. You know, we, we came up with the, the downtown revitalization and what we're doing there, which is just amazing what Mule and Polizotti's did. One of the things that needs to be done is to basically brand the Boulevard. And that is, you know, not only, you know, I think everybody's agreed now that it's being, being called The Boulevard, and that's the organization that Josh Mann is heading up right now, but the branding would not only include the, the mark of the Boulevard, the logo, the signage, the wayfinding, but the whole feel of exactly what would be done. So in, in working with staff in Vern Lawson's office, and with, with Heather Kennedy, and with Jason Cottle, we came up with this idea that we, you know, that would include even more citizens in this. And we have the downtown committee, but we have even more people that we're going to include. So what we came up with is because of my sort of unique situation of being on this council, also having my own design firm, but also being an instructor, assistant professor at the college, we came up with the idea that this semester, we would get students from the design school at Antelope Valley College, and I've talked to Dr. Fisher about this, and he loves the idea, and we would actually form design teams of students. But it's not going to be where we just let them go, and they come up with some kind of idea. We're going to take them through the whole process, as if what professionals would do if we had hired a consultant, RBF, or anybody else. And we have, we're going to be creating an advisory committee, not us, but the Boulevard Association is basically creating an advisory committee of, of businesses, of people downtown, of, of some of Scott Erlick's people that's creating. And you'll get a bunch of younger, creative people together, and that advisory committee is going to be given a, sort of a packet of the city's target audience, and their positioning, the plans and all this. And then that advisory committee, I'm going to work with the students to make sure that they stay on track with the advisory committee, and then ultimately, it would come down to a decision of, you know, maybe a couple of the council members, and the city manager, and the staff from redevelopment, to decide what the ultimate branding would be at the end, and then those students would get a scholarship. And so we're right at the initial stages of, of the Boulevard Association forming, Heather Kennedy forming an advisory committee, and moving this forward. But this is, it's been done in other communities, and it's pretty exciting, because it includes the younger students, it includes the business people, it includes the artistic, the architects, and it just makes a great synergy. And I think we're going to come up with the best product at the end for the branding of the Boulevard.
You left out the best part. How much does it cost the city?
My firm's doing it free, so. Because otherwise, they can't vote on stuff, then, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just had one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would that replace the current logo?
No, that's the city's branding, not the Boulevard's branding.
Okay.
Ms. Marquez, you have seen the research on the city legal, on the city logo. You haven't seen the research?
I have seen it.
You have seen it. Okay.
Still asking.
All right. Okay, my turn. Is already done? Good. I have a few things I want to talk, stretch, you know, it's going to take a few minutes. The first thing I want to do is, I've talked to the Vice Mayor about how we want to really start promoting the arts in Lancaster more than we ever have in the past. And so I'm directing him to, to work with staff, and select qualified people to recognize the artists in this community for superior accomplishments, much like we do the athletes, much like we do the neighborhood heroes that get involved with law enforcement. I think that the, we should start recognizing the artists for the substantial contribution they make, and I'm directing you to do that, and create an award to give the, when suitable, and I'm going to be asking you to make that presentation, okay? That being said, you know, I want to tell you the story of my car. I have a sports car. It's a, it's a race car is what it is. It's a magnificent car. My wife let me buy it. She's truly wonderful that way. And the problem with race cars is their parts break down, and they break down much faster than regular cars. And unfortunately, I lead my life as if I am a race car, and a major part is breaking down. And so I have an appointment tomorrow to get that part fixed. And I have no doubt that they'll be able to fix it. But when you have appointments like that, it makes you wonder if you've left anything unsaid. And I think the city recognizes that I never hesitate to speak my mind, ever. My wife tells me that perhaps that's not a good thing. But oftentimes, I don't speak from my heart, and I want nothing left unsaid. And so I'm going to have some reflections, some concerns, some, some advice for the city, that all of you might want to take into consideration, and may not want to take into consideration. I think in the last year, the city has done incredible things, and I am truly honored to have had the opportunity to work with you. I have never dreamed that we would accomplish what we've accomplished, and I never dreamed we would have a vision that we now have. I think that the, what we're going to do downtown is going to give us a city center that will give us a foundation to do even more remarkable things. But I have some concerns. I think we need to recognize that there are members of the Palmdale media who would like us to fail. And we should recognize that, and figure out something to do about it. In that, frequently, we see stories on the front page that have no business being on the front page, and they tell stories that certainly didn't occur in this room. They are just factually inaccurate. And I would suggest that we find other ways to get the, the true story about what Lancaster is accomplishing out to the citizens. And the reason for this is that when Lancaster's attacked, when the city is attacked, it's not just us, it's not just the mayor, it's not just the council. It is the hardworking families of Lancaster that pay the consequence. I think that the media coverage of this community is directly responsible sometimes for our lack of success, because they really don't herald the great things you folks are doing. The battle seems to be waging, that has waged since I was born, on Lancaster Boulevard, and it's the, the growth versus no, no-growth people. And ultimately, when you get right down to the issue, there are people that want us to grow, and there are people who don't. And as soon as the people who don't want us to grow get enough votes to elect a council, then we will have a no-growth council. Until then, we have a council that wants to grow, and grow intelligently, and compassionately, and vibrantly. And I hope that continues. There's some things that are in the works that I think that we should continue to work on. I think that the Eye in the Sky program is a program that will truly make a phenomenal difference to the city, and should be a priority. If we are able to get the Eye in the Sky working, I really believe, to the bottom of my heart, that Lancaster will truly be the safest city in America. And the reason for that is because we will have certainty of apprehension. If you commit a major crime in Lancaster, we will be filming it within 30 seconds. We will be able to catch the perpetrators. We, we have an opportunity here to truly change this city, and perhaps the world, that we should take advantage of. I think we should remember that the federal government is not our friend. They are anything but. And perhaps we should start pressuring our congressional representatives, or requesting more from our congressional representatives, as hard as their job is. What the federal government is doing to this community is truly outrageous. They are giving us all of their problems without any of the resources to fix it. The, the other day, I had an interview with the LA Times, and I told them that the true racists in this city are the people that work for the Housing and Urban Development. And they really are. They really do have a racist policy, in that they are putting the poor up here, but keeping all of the billions of dollars that are downtown LA that are there to help these people downtown. They keep the money downtown. So they encourage people to come up to a place that has limited healthcare, no transportation, and no resources to help them, and they wonder why the only help that is being given to these people is a prison cell. They have made it so that is almost a certainty. The federal government, what they are doing is despicable. If they gave us the resources, I don't have any doubt in my mind that this city staff would fix a whole host of problems, and we would see people. of the innovative, creative ways that money would be spent. The, there's some things that we have not yet started to work on that I hope we work on in the future. One of them is, I really envision Lancaster as a place that has companies like Ideal Labs, that is now currently in Pasadena and was responsible for East Solar, someday locating in the Antelope Valley. But we need to recognize that they will never come here unless we solve one fundamental problem. We need a school that their children will go to. These people are incredibly brilliant. They're the top 20% of Caltech, MIT, and Stanford, and education to them is something different than perhaps it is to everyone else. And that's why this council needs to start thinking about a charter school. Because if we had the best school in America for the kids that qualify for entrance into it, we would go a long ways in attracting these corporations that we want to locate here. I think that one of the things I failed in the last 18 months is I started out wanting to start some type of health commission to do something about the deplorable mortality rate of our community. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of people needlessly dying because we have the highest mortality rate in the county, because we really do not have appropriate health care for people, for any of us, not just poor people, but for any of us. Many of the doctors in this community have contacted me about wanting to start a health commission, to start doing something to address this problem. It is something we should think about. And the last thing I would like to talk about is some remarkable people that I've had the opportunity to work with that have incredible leadership ability, that I hope the citizens of this city pay a lot more attention to. Ron and Sheri, working with you, has been truly remarkable, truly remarkable. Not only are you a pain in the butt, Ron, but you're also incredibly bright, and you have incredible ideas, and you have incredible energy. Sheri, you have grabbed this job and with, and you've admitted it, no knowledge whatsoever, none whatsoever, and have embraced it and attacked it and have kept all of us on the straight and narrow. I mean, sometimes temptations in this job to, to cut corners are oftentimes in front of us, and Sheri is always the one who tells us, hey, that's a corner you can't cut. And I really, really appreciate that. And I really appreciate how you've grown into this job and how you really understand running a city. It's remarkable working with you. There are people coming up that I think are, have really demonstrated a true love for this city. Lee DeRico is one of them. I think that if Lee DeRico were to be more involved in the criminal justice aspect of this community, we could do incredibly innovative things. Marvin Crist on the Criminal Justice Commission has some remarkable ideas, but more importantly, he's one of those people that actually get things done. He gets them done. He's like the bulldozer that, that somebody gave me as a gift. Nothing stands in his way. Sandy Smith on the Planning Commission has remarkable organization abilities, and these are people that we should be giving more opportunities to in running this city. There are some young people. Larry Chappell, I think, is going to be a national leader. We should get him more involved in the city than he is. Mr. Derryberry, the attorney that we just put on the Neighborhood Committee, is a remarkable young man that I hope gets more and more committed to the city. Alex Wheeler and Ashley Paris, my daughter and son-in-law, are truly remarkable individuals. I would hope you encourage them to get involved in the city in ways they've never been before. And with that, I would like to say that in selecting the leaders to run this community, we should start recognizing just how difficult it is. We're asking people to negotiate multimillion-dollar contracts with foreign corporations, people who speak Mandarin as their primary language. It really isn't a job that we should be entrusting to people who have not had a proven ability to do the job. It's a different level than it ever has been before. We are in the process of negotiating with companies to bring car manufacturing plants to the city. The people who do that, you should pay close attention to what they've done in the past when electing them, because this is not the small town it used to be. It is becoming a major player in the state of California, and we should elect the leadership that's capable of doing that. Thank you very much for listening to me. Hopefully, this time tomorrow, I will be talking to my children. And with that, we will close the meeting. The, we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Tanya L. Burns, lost her longstanding battle with cancer on August 12th, 2009. She is survived by her husband, their two sons, and a host of family and friends. She was a Lancaster resident, a heroic firefighter, and a true champion in every sense of the word. She was a former UCLA Track and Field All-American, winner of the NCAA High Jump Championship, and a fourth-place winner in the U.S. Olympic Trials in 1984. Mrs. Burns was the first African-American female fighter, firefighter in the history of the Los Angeles County Fire Department. She will be sorely missed. Jennifer Jenny Gonzalez is a city employee who worked at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center. Wife of city employee Robert Gonzalez, lost her longstanding battle with cancer on August 24th, 2009. Jenny was a genuine, true friend to all. She was compassionate and giving. Jenny has been described as being an angel. We just couldn't see her wings. She is survived by her husband and leaves behind many friends who remember her always. We are now adjourned until Tuesday, September 8th at 5:00 p.m. And Carol, my day is done, and I wish I was coming home, but you're taking me to UCLA. So I'll see you in a moment.